Okay. Apologize for us starting a little bit late here, so we will move on to our agenda item with Anna Kinder and the Trona County Health Department update. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Good.
So I'm going to defer the presentation to Brandon Daigle from MOA Architecture, so that he can give the specifics of what we're looking at. We have almost completed schematic design. It's moving very fast, but in a good way, so.
Brendan?
Thank you all, thanks for the time today. As you all know, we've been working on this project for some time now, and we are coming to you today to update you on the progress to date. We've been meeting regularly with an executive committee. Commissioner Nicolason is a part of that on behalf of the commission, along with Anna and members of her board and her team. Also meeting with us, who's part of the team now, Mr. Tim Schenk, who's the owner and rep on your behalf, has been helping keep us on.
Mr. Daigle?
Yes, sir.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Oh.
It might be easier for me to listen.
There we go. Sorry about that. So today, we're just gonna kind of run through the progress of the design so far. As Anna mentioned, we're near the end of schematic design and finishing the schematic design concept and working through pricing right now. And we'll talk about the schedule update as it relates to that and looking forward to the next few steps as we move forward. So just to clarify where we're at in the process, we've completed programming and conceptual design and then also schematic designs we mentioned. As we move through the steps of design, we are getting more and more refined with the scope of work, the size of the building and what the building looks like. At programming, if you all recall, we started with a significantly larger building. We've made many cuts to the projected growth or the long-term growth and the size of the building to try and keep costs in control. And we've also oriented it to the site now. When we had programming documents early on, we didn't have a specific site. And now that the site has been picked, we've tailored that program to fit onto your site. So we are here completing two of these five phases so far. The early site analysis, as you all know well, the site is a largely graded site from east to west and from 12th Street heading to the north. So we're looking at ingress and egress on the site and the considerations of that, along with the prevailing winds that we all are accustomed to here in Casper, public transportation and the bus stop location, along with staff parking areas and multiple entryways into the building, along with the rapid response component that we all learned about with the drive-through component that was really important during the pandemic and looking for future efficiencies to staffing and keeping people that are ill or potentially ill out of the building as much as possible so as they're not having cross-contamination with other visitors to the building and being able to provide those services in a safe and comfortable place for the staff as well. So we mentioned early on when we started working with you all that we intend to work with a very iterative process. And by doing so, we're able to flush out a lot of ideas in a rapid amount of time. These are just four examples of both site and floor plan options. You can see the different colors on the lower. I don't know if I can point this or not. Barely. But the lower plans you can see are the floor plan diagrams that have all the different building programmatic elements. And on the top, you can see the different site configurations. All of those elements that I mentioned with site ingress and egress, prevailing winds, snow removal, grading along the east side have all been taken into account in order to maximize the efficiency of the site and to provide for future growth should the county determine it needs it. So through those studies, we developed what we call a parti diagram, which really simplifies the program down. You can see in this diagram, we have a main circulation spine, kind of this curved form that is where largely the public interaction will happen. It's where the main entrance will occur and the training rooms and the public face of the building will be. In the southeast or southwest corner is the administrative offices and then the clinic and disease prevention. And then, as we mentioned, the rapid response on the page north of the plan here. We looked at different precedent images with the design team in order to ensure that the project fits into the character of Wyoming and of Casper specifically, made up of materials that are durable, that have minimal maintenance as we look at the long-term life cycle costs of the building and realizing that we're making a long-term investment in the county's asset. We don't want to be maintaining it at a high cost or a high premium as we look down the road. And so we were blending. In this exercise, you can see this dot exercise that was performed with the team, kind of this red, yellow, green stoplight exercise of preference, whether it's the amount of glass, the type of material, but getting a sense and consensus among the group as to what the priorities were for the project. We then started to apply those inputs from the staff and from the executive committee to our building form and started to articulate the spine and the makeup of the building. Ultimately, we'll show you here in a minute the materials that we're proposing to date. But showing these precedent imagerys really helped the design team and the advisory team understand the types of materials that we're proposing at this early stage of the project. We even did a series of massing studies using AI, recognizing that we can generate really quick scenarios of place and penetration, whether it's opacity, whether it's opaque or transparent or semi-transparent. But these really helped us articulate the potential massing studies in a quick manner for the design team to understand. One of the main forms that we've taken into account, we all recognize that the wind is one of our largest potential assets. And so we felt like we were engaging with the wind in a way that we were able to block it away from the entrance points, but also engage with it in a way that it can articulate the entrance. And we were trying to help people point the way as the roof swoop can be integrated from south to north or the depressed example that we have in the bottom. Ultimately, the recommendation that we're moving forward with is the upper swoop here that you can see the rise from south to north. And then we move from that more conceptual level into this schematic plan. You can see the form starting to take shape where we have this large circulation spine down the middle with the clear story windows that allow natural light into the public areas, this lower form in the administrative areas. And these two wings here, on the upper left image, you can see the color-coded administration wing and that has all the different programs in it. You can see the low roof on that side. You can see the covered drop-off in the middle there. And then you can see the other, what we're calling flex space on the north side there or shell space that provides for potential community partnerships or expansion to be built out. One of the things that we've been aware of is other buildings have been built is they're being built to suit current needs. And through the evolution of the construction process, even at completion of construction, they're being filled up. And so as we provide a little bit of space for them to grow in the future at a cost that's going to be the cheapest it will ever be at the day that you build this building and so that you're not fit with the bill of having to expand immediately once you move in, is the goal with this. This also offers us the opportunity, as we get more refined costs, to potentially phase the building if we need to in that area. And I'm sorry, the clicker's not working properly, but it's in the upper-left image, that left lower mass that's up there. So as we've started to move from massing form into a materiality study, you can see the site taking shape. We have two entrances off of Conwell Street on the west side, no entrances off of 12th. We did that because Conwell is a slower traffic street that provides the most safest route in and out of the site. Also is the most cost-effective way to manage ingress and egress because of the grade coming off of 12th Street down into the building. You can see the main drop-off there to the west, protected by the administrative wing on the southwest corner. And on the eastern half of the building, you can see the drive-throughs there. And in the drive-throughs, there's a covered drive-through option that kind of looks and feels like a quick loom where you have garage doors on either side that you could drive through if we have inclement weather. Staff can also utilize this to load and unload their services as they largely service the community outboard of the building. And so that if they have inclement weather, they can load their buildings, or I'm excuse you, load their cars inside the building. There's a second drive aisle in the event of the need for high demand that would be an exterior drive-through that they could have essentially two rows of cars servicing that rapid response clinic area. And we provided queuing space around the building to the southeast and south side of the building. And then post-treatment, there's a queuing, a post-treatment queuing line for people that need to wait 10 to 15 minutes after they receive some sort of treatment. All of the finishes that we're proposing are pre-manufactured or pre-finished products so that they don't have to be annually or semi-annually maintained. We're proposing travertine on the lower masses along with split-face CMU block veneer and a copper panel in the orange, I'm sorry, the green panel, green-blue panel that provides context as the warmth of the public space in the middle spine there. The idea behind the copper panel being that it will patina over time on its own and it will become a natural element that integrates with the landscape and gives it the character and identification of a symbol of an important building that the health department is. It becomes an identifiable brand. It also aligns with the current branding of the health department and makes it recognizable to the public as it front to the building and acts as a consistent spine throughout the whole elevation of the facade. These are some examples of the exterior elevations along with some interior renderings that have been started to be developed and we're currently pricing all of these materials and finishes on the inside. So here's a closer look at the floor plan. You can see the main entrance off of the west in that, the pair of double doors. You can see the blue reception there in the middle, two waiting lounges and the clinic area in the kind of purple color in the middle of the plan, the finance and administrative offices in the green area, public meetings in the south and north ends of the building and the majority of the support spaces of environmental services and other support on that administrative wing. That pink box in the upper-left corner is the shell space that we've planned for to date. Another thing that we've taken into account is the current off-site storage needs that the health department has and bringing those in-house. And so we have interior storage directly adjacent to the departments that they serve along with an intake storage, which is largely going to house those longer-term material items and stock that the staff needs. There's off-site facility stores that you're paying rent on currently and we can bring those in-house with the amount of square footage we have allocated for storage to date. There's just a few renderings of the aerials, kind of overhead view. You can see the site. We've accommodated parking to date for staff vehicles or county health vehicles along with adequate staff and visitor parking. We've also looked really closely at the connection to the Lifesteps campus, which houses currently the closest bus stop. And we did an analysis of running a ramp from that bus stop down to your site and it would be over a quarter of a mile for a visitor to be dropped off at that bus stop and be hooked and then to walk or access the health department from that site. We've had some discussions with the city that they're allowing us to add a bus stop down the hill from Lifesteps so we don't expect people to walk down the hill in inclement weather. So that would happen out in front of the building. Project schedule. So just this afternoon, Tim Schenk helped facilitate the solicitation of construction manager at-risk proposals. Those are being evaluated tomorrow and a shortlist will be proposed for interviews next week. The intention is to bring the recommended construction manager at-risk before the commission for consideration at the end of December, if schedule allows. And then we would have the construction manager at-risk verify pricing based on the schematic design drawings and we would then move into design development with an approved plan.
Mr. Chairman, I think I just want the commission and the public to be clear. I think what you just said is that the way things are scheduled presently, you'll be asking this commission for an award of the contractor for this project on December 19th?
That's the intention, if the commission's schedule allows for that, yes.
Okay. And I think we've put you on the tentative schedule, so thank you.
Yep. So the intention is, once we have the construction manager at-risk onboard, there would be pricing exercises executed. We would work with them on the final construction deliverable and the schedule for that. Ideally, we would like to have an early foundation and dirtwork package to get them started sooner than later so that we can be ahead of the curve when it comes to the summertime construction schedule. But the intention is that the whole project is wrapped up in the first quarter of 2026. Sorry, 2026. Yep. So two years from today, we'll be nearing the end.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Do you have any approximate costs it's going to cost us?
We've been getting price estimates from our cost estimator. We are reconciling those as we speak and we have prices that they're getting back to us. There were initial cost estimates that they put in and assumptions that they had in, and we're working through that with our engineering team and finding areas that either missed or duplicative or not included in our drawings.
Do you have any?
I don't have a hard number for you yet today, Dallas.
Thank you.
So with that, as I mentioned, I kind of precluded to that in the schedule, but the intention is that we come before you all with the recommendation for the construction manager at-risk via your owner's representative, Mr. Tim Schenk, and move forward into the pricing exercise with them. That would be the first step with that team. And the intention of having our pricing done with theirs is there is reconciliation that can be done to be realized if there's cost savings or opportunities that we're not aware of that the contractor can help us realize.
Commissioner Nicolason?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So the pink area, which is the wing at the northwest corner, that is flex space, I guess? Is that what we're calling that?
Yeah, flex space. That, early on when we did the programming exercise and did the planning for the building, there was a potential for other community partnerships to be a part of the building. And we met with a few of them and looked at an approximate size of what might fit their needs. And we've planned for that, that could fit multiple community stakeholders. If none of those were to come to fruition, that also provides flexibility to the commission and the health department to grow into that space with additional programs of their own, whether it's the potential for a pharmacy or additional administrative support or services that are yet to be defined. There's always a shortage of storage, so it could serve as storage in the near term. But the intention is that it's flexible space to grow into.
So without that flex space, are we at capacity with the current programming and staffing? Or is there room to expand within that footprint?
There is some room to expand current staffing in the footprint without the flex space. You would meet current needs with about a, I'd say about a 12% staffing increase in the footprint without the flex space.
Thanks.
Yep.
Commissioner Mill?
Maybe this goes to Commissioner Nicolason or Anna. So there's, we're trying to get the extension a little bit, push back one year for the obligation and for also the full expenditure of the ARPA funds. Do you foresee that on your schedule as needing that? Or do you think all ARPA funds could be expended by the end of '25 with obligations completed by '24? Or would that extra year give you a little buffer there just in case?
Our current plan would give you the opportunity to expend all of those funds within the current requirement for the deadline, based on our current schedule.
Okay.
Yep. We can expend all those funds necessary.
Yeah. We did ask, WCCA is asking or working with NACO to try to extend that just in case, but it's good to hear that you'll be on track.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to follow up on that, I really appreciate the work that you and Tim and the whole group has done to really keep us on track. And I think we need to make the assumption that we don't get an extension of this. And so to expend or encumber whatever the legal phraseology of it is, I think, is critical. But you know how materials are delayed and labor shortages and winter and all that. So that's why I think it's a good idea for us to try to get you more flexibility or get this project more flexibility if possible. But yeah, we can't count on it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that that's why we are so aggressive with our scheduling to make sure that we're staying on top of things. That's why we will push for certain things. But just to add to a couple of things that Brandon referenced, the warehouse is close proximity to where that drive-through was when a staff member goes in and can load. Currently, we don't have the ability to accept any large loads or any things that are on pallets, which happens quite often. We also have training rooms. There's two training rooms, the kind of the periwinkle color, I guess, that's on the opposite ends of things. That is something that has been proven time again that there are not enough training spaces in our community outside of going to motels, which then incurs a cost. So we do a lot of training within ourselves, but then to be able to open that up to other people that may need to use that, I think, has proven itself as a necessary need. And currently, we're renting the C-cans. There are three of them across the street and U-Haul. So our hope and our intent is that everything would fit within the warehouse, which includes our medical tent that we have that takes a lot of space as well as the HVAC system, et cetera. And I did want to just call attention that Kristi Nelson is here, who is our board chair, says you have any questions for her. But the flex space has been something that we have had conversation with. There is a letter from the Wyoming Department of Health that has indicated that they would like to have WIC in there and they have agreed to provide some form of rent. But that is as far as we pursued any of that information.
Mr. Chairman, give me a soft cost. Give me an approximation of what this may cost, just a range. These are the questions the public ask me.
Sure. So I would say the range right now is between $22 to $35 million.
Okay. And I would be looking at the higher cost, knowing what happens in the building world.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for the time. I guess I would just say we'd hope to see you all in a couple of weeks, more updates.
Okay. Real good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lita?
Good evening. I wanted to give a quick update on the Hidden Valley ISD only because we have a, I guess it would be considered a little of a unique situation. It's my understanding that this ISD actually has funds in a bank account. When I originally spoke to our original contact, she told me they had approximately $1,000 in a bank account. As time progressed, I did not confirm anything. But now at this point, with it being dissolved, the statutes require the money, any remaining money in the ISD shall go to the treasurer's office. And then from there, the statutes do allow the commission to do certain, you know, act certain ways with the money that's left over. So our plan is to contact our original contact, ask her just to write a check and get the account closed. If for whatever reason that can't be done, because now there's some disagreement between homeowners about this issue, I guess, then our plan would be to obtain a court order allowing you all who now sit as the board of trustees for the ISD to obtain that money. And then we can go from there with what you all choose to do with that money. Now again, she had said approximately $1,000. So just to let you all know, that's coming.
Okay. Any questions for Lita?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to Heather.
There we go, okay. It doesn't dent. Okay. There we go.
You just have to pull it close.
So, good afternoon. For the legal update, I guess all I really have are the agenda items for this evening. I know we, there were two grant agreements from the sheriff's office on there. I know Commissioner Nicolason had some questions. I'm not sure if you were able to get answers to your questions from the sheriff about those.
Heather, I apologize. I meant to call you back. The sheriff and the chairman and I spoke at some length. My concerns were addressed and we didn't feel like we needed to make any changes this time. And I do apologize for not circling back with you. I thought about it and then I spaced it out.
I'm glad you got your answers because I know I didn't have them, so.
Thanks.
So those are still on the agenda and will be approved. I think the only other item that was on there that I placed on there was the application of the county to the city to start the annexation process for the parcel that has been de-annexed by Mills. We're just getting that process started. I don't know if you have any questions for me, but that is, I believe, on the consent agenda for this evening.
Heather, I actually do have a question on that. So the mayor of Mills called me. They're working on another piece of land that they were talking about doing a land swap with. Are you aware of that?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not.
All right. I'll circle back with you on that then.
And then I guess, as far as updates go, I don't have it for you yet. I did receive a draft MOU from the Town of Bar Nun's Council concerning the Wardwell dissolution and the service of water during that process. And I've reviewed it and we'll get it to you to review. If it looks okay, we should have it on the agenda on the 19th for approval.
Okay.
And we'll get that when?
I can send it out. I just received it and reviewed it today, so I can get it out to you this week.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I would like to see it sooner than later, just to get up to speed on it. I know there are a lot of moving parts involved in that and I think that a lot of them have been resolved. But we don't want to leave any of the members of the county hanging in terms of not having service or maintenance and that kind of thing, so thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Commissioner North?
Heather, we do have a special meeting that was regal next week, next Tuesday. We changed the date on that and we're waiting for some of this, but I didn't want to say a whole lot until things were finalized and approved. And so, but it is moving forward.
And the last I had heard, things were continuing forward the way that everybody intended. So I don't think there's, you know, really been any issues that have come up, at least that I've been made aware of with that process. And that, I mean, really, those are all the updates I have for you, unless you have questions for me about anything in particular.
Any questions? Okay.
Heather, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman.
Oops, sorry.
I'm gonna send you an email real quick, so I gotta get my thoughts together a little bit better. But it'll be concerning the joint powers boards for Casper City and county whether one notification for applicants will be good enough for the boards or if both entities have to send out notifications.
Which joint powers board is it?
It'd be for the AMCO.
Oh, okay.
And also for the
And also for the detention center and the Hall of Justice.
Oh, any of the JPVs that we?
Between the two. I'll send you an email to remind you.
Thank you.
EDJPP.
Was there one more?
Yeah, there's three on that.
It was, yeah, the three. It was AMCO, Hall of Justice, Detention Center. That's three.
We'll look at, we'll look at it because I think.
Justice and Detention Center are separate.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right. Then we'll stay in recess in a work session until the business meeting.